The United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
All right, looking for a motion to approve our agenda, but I think we want to make a add some to the consent agenda, is that correct? On the sole sourced playground.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, before counsel, there was just one other item that we were hoping to get in front of you all tonight is the sole sourcing for the sunshade. The, just for the public's knowledge as well, the sunshade is a, the items that are outside and there's a warranty that is on that. So what this allows us to do is be able to use sole sourcing in order to make sure that we keep that under warranty until it runs out. Okay?
I pretty much understand. Thank you. You have a first, there's a second. Any more discussion on it? Hear none? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Hear none? All right. Moving along, let's, if we all could, Vaughn Fitzpatrick passed away this past week and he was a big member of our community. How long has he been with the family here? For 160 plus years? Yeah, so, and the west belt track over here where all the big industries went in, that was their family property and he elected to save it for that. And he also, I'm not going to go any further. I think you're going to read us off a little something here a little bit, ain't you? So if let's would right now, let's just have a moment of silence for him and I thank you. All right. Uh, public comment, let's see, I've got Didi Dillingham signed up. Come on up. If you wouldn't, you get up here, give us your name and address for the record and.
Sure. I'm Didi Dillingham, nineteen Tiger Lily Lane, Mills River, live in the tiny house community. Um, so today, I'm going to probably be reading a little bit because I haven't really, I do know this, but it's not enough for me to just say it on my own. So yesterday I went to the conserving Carolinas presentation at Edwah Library. I love their presentations. It was on light pollution. I think light pollution is something that we all think about, the lights that are coming into our home from our neighbors, the lights that are on, like that tile building by the, by the firehouse. You know, when you leave here, just kind of take a look at all the lights that are on everywhere. So the presentation was on light pollution. Luckily for me, conserving Carolina sent me the PDF of their presentation, which I'd love to send to you all by email. Just to keep in mind in all the meetings that we have, that we're going to be discussing that like afterwards, I'm going to stay for the business meeting because we're going to be talking about street lighting. So just a couple of quick things. What's really cool is that just for instance, in Buncombe County, I didn't have time to research more counties, but there's four cities that have a dark sky ordinance and it's Asheville, Woodfin, Weaverville and Black Mountain. Wouldn't that be cool if Mills River had a dark sky ordinance, dark sky policy at a Coney Bell? So we have a hundred homes there. At 10 o'clock at night, we have to turn out our outdoor lights and our outdoor lights that we have, they have to be facing down. So the lights are facing down and, and in our garden lighting, we haven't really approached that yet, but garden lighting also is very detrimental to wildlife as well. So the wild, this is what I learned yesterday. I already knew it, but now I have it written down. It affects, light pollution affects wild animals and insects such as our lovely fireflies, which brings a lot of tourism here and moss. And it disrupts their natural cycles. It disorients them. It alters their habitats. And it makes them more vulnerable to predators. It also for wild animals and insects that affects their mating and their ability to reproduce, their hunting abilities, their foraging, their migration and rest. You know, they have a hard time, wild animals, they have a hard time, you know, living among us. And so I think that we should do what we can for them regarding the lights. Humans, people might not know that it disrupts our natural circadian rhythms. And of course the phone rings, but I had it turned off and no notification. So I don't get it. Humans, very important. It leads to sleep loss and insomnia, stress and health issues such as obesity, diabetes, heart disease and certain cancers. So, you know, think about that, even when you leave here, take a look at all the lights that we see that are going that way, that are going that way. And I'm hoping that in that zoning meeting, I think it might be December second or 10th. They're going to be talking about that new, you guys are coming up with new guidelines and it includes development and external lighting. I think that it's very important for us to discuss all the light pollution situation. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I got Brian Ross.
Good evening, Council Brian Ross, 16 Schoolhouse Road. You guys know me, you've appointed me to some boards and wanted to talk to you tonight a little bit about that. Didn't have a big presentation planned, but a couple of people brought it up when we came in the door. So thought we'd give it a quick minute. My name is the name on this new group yesterday that came out on Facebook called Keep Mills River Rural. Yes, I stole your campaign slogan, word for word. I thought it was great. I thought it speaks to people. I thought it was something people could relate to, just keep Mills River rural. Everyone I talked to says that. Everyone defines it a little differently, but everyone says that. Whether like the five of you, you were born and raised here, or you were like me in my fifties and I could have lived anywhere in this country. And this is where I chose to live, even though I'm from the other coast. Or some of the testimonials we've received already in the first 24 hours, why I came here, why I stay here. It's all open spaces, green space, it's all just rural, rural, oozing of it. Dark sky. I have two things now there in that website that get a little, little confrontational. That's one of them. Because we currently have no protection. Right now in North Carolina, you, you can't grow pot. It's coming. And when it does, it's a crop that benefits from 24 hour a day grow lights. None of our farmers do that right now. None of our farmers, they don't need it. There's no, James, you can correct me, you, you grow in greenhouses. There's no financial benefit to the electric bill right now. But there's going to come a day where that's going to happen. We don't have anything in there for that. I'm on the, the planning board that you're talking about. That is one of the things that we're talking about. There's a couple of other members here that are on that too. The biggest thing I wanted to accomplish here was I know the timeline. I know how aggressive it is. I can see the two week Zoom calls, the monthly in-person meetings. I can see the timeline between now and the end of June. As you guys know, we know, everyone over there in the corners knows, June 30th or July 1st is our deadline. It is this town's one shot and I just, I can't sit there and hope that people passively pick up on that. So I have decided to proactively make sure they know that this town has one shot at conversations about dark sky, one conversation about filling our flood, one conversation about fill in the blank, everything. This is it. Land use or land uses and regulations are what the UDO is and that UDO deadline being July 1st. So just want to make sure I get the word out proactively that if you have any questions, I'm doing this with no donations. I'm paying for it myself. I don't want donations. I just want the word passed on. And I'm not campaigning because I'm not running for anything. That's just how passionate I am about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else for public comment? Hear none? We'll move on to council comments. Sandra, you want to start us all?
I would like to take a moment to recognize the Fitzpatrick family and all the condolences. The Fitzpatrick family has had roots in our community over six years. Or, it's one of the things that I was told, and they are due in five years soon. He went up to ministry and he went up to residence. He was very concerned about the environment. He put that into practice. They are one of the few companies LEED certified in the country. And that's leadership in energy and environmental design, which is a great honor. They are also the top taxpayers for Mills River, which we greatly appreciate the contributions and care that is taken to our, to our town. And once again, we would like to offer the condolences.
Councilmember, I'm so sorry, if I may, we were just checking on our, on our audio. Can you just make sure that that is turned on? Right there. And if not, if it is, if we could just move this up a little bit further, just because you didn't get it on. And if you would like to read it again, you're more than welcome to to put it on the record for the, for the audio, but I just wanted to apologize for that.
I would like to take a moment to recognize the Fitzpatrick family. He donated the chimney of the family home. And it's located, located in the colony in the part of the. He loves Mills River and interests. He was very concerned about the environment and put that into practice in the farm food farm. They are one of the few companies that are LEED certified in the country. And that's leadership in energy and environmental design, which is a great honor. They are also top. Greatly appreciate contributions and care that he has made to our town. And once again.
Is that all you got, Sandra? Okay, Jeff, you got anything?
Sure, I'd just like to give a shout out to our veterans in the audience, Mr. Foster, Mr. Ross. Thank y'all for your service. For the record, I dressed myself tonight. My wife did not dress me. So she wanted to make sure that was out. Also like to take a second to remind everyone to remember Mady in our prayers, Michelle's daughter, tough young lady. Very proud of her and she's going through a tough time.
James, you got anything?
No, but thank you for that man.
Working through it, got you. Yeah, me and Sandra met with them also. I think we're the same idea. My condolences to Fitzpatrick family. I appreciate all our veterans, including you. We got a lot in the community. They really stuck their neck out for us. And we got some others in there right now that's looking at us as we speak. Uh, I want to just take just a second. Counsel, with, and I've talked to Brian about this, just, I'm just making y'all aware. And if, if you think it don't play a part, please correct me, but in these groups, much like this is, you know, it's Facebook and so on. There's going to come a time when there's going to be a special use permit come up and you're going to be asked, have you seek any information, seeked out any evidence or read anything or anything? There could possibly be one of these days where somebody would have got on one of these chat groups or something and put some information on there that one of us probably shouldn't have heard. You know, I could see it possibly happening. It may never happen, but I just want to make each and every one of you. I, I even told him last night, I said, I love what you're doing. It's a great thing. I try not to join any of these groups and I explained to him why, just like I'm explaining to you guys. I just think as the mayor, it's just my duty to let you know that there's a possibility one day that you're going to be asked if you heard any of this in any of these groups, the way Facebook is building and building, building. And you're going to have to be excluded from the conversation that particular night. Because you've heard a little too much or, or, you know, innocently is the bad part of it. Innocently heard or seen, you know, too much. So just keep that in your thing. If you know something like that's coming up, I would try to steer myself away from that for a few weeks till you get past it or something. I just don't want anybody to end up in a particular shape, especially when there's only five seats and you can't participate. Because that particular night, we are the judge and the jury, that particular night on either side. So just keep that in your mind.
Mr. Mayor, will you lose our quorum? Then someone else will make the decision.
Uh, well, the problem with these, I think, on the, I can't ever say this word, judicial hearings. We have to, we have to have at least, we have to have a full, or is it full? Even, even open a meeting.
If my memory serves me, so I would have to go back and absolutely confirm this, but if my memory serves me, I believe it's the core, it's, it's the quorum of four that would be required.
What I think, three to run a regular meeting, four for those minimum.
So if two of us have seen something we shouldn't see or information we shouldn't have, and the whole idea is fair. So that all sides have the same information at the same time.
Yeah.
And that we're not able to come up with a quorum.
Yeah. And what I see happening is the, these attorneys nowadays has probably got staff looking at some of this and seeing if us particular council people are chiming in on it. And that is really what's going to get you booted off.
Planning board members or board adjustment.
That's going to be a lawyer's question.
Yeah.
I don't know that they have to step aside like we do and that, I don't know. You was there, you was the chair.
I would recommend we keep, if you're on a board, thank God for your service. We appreciate you. I mean, that's a thankless job. But let's be careful about comments prior to a meeting. Because if we go into a meeting with our mind made up, then that gives the attorney the opportunity to say, that's not fair. Everyone needs to have their.
And we're not necessarily saying what you're doing with, playing into that in any way, but there's several of them out there that has a lot of input statements in it that could particularly be to a certain piece of property. That's when it would be a direct effect. Okay, uh, if anybody has anything else for council comments, if not, I'll move us forward. All right, major updates.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Only one update for you this evening. I just want to thank council for your leadership and the conversation around the town hall style event that we've been discussing and we discussed at the last meeting as well. And so I just wanted to announce to the public as well, and we're going to start really pushing this out through our social media channels, et cetera. Is that on November 24th, at from five to six PM at Fire Station Three, will be the first of a quarterly meeting of what we're calling the Mill Tripper Community Conversations. And so it's an opportunity where we're, we're excited from a staff perspective to be able to talk about the exciting projects and initiatives that are going, that are going on within the town. As well as again, from a council perspective, having two council members present that are, that are assigned to each of those meetings to be able to have conversation in a, in a more, you know, in a less formalized setting that we currently have here. And then to be able to hear from the community at large. We have a lot of incredibly important projects going on such as the UDO, as we've already talked about. And this is another avenue that we're trying to work through. So I just want to thank council for, for your push for this type of work and we're excited to kick it off. And I real, and I want to say that the fire chief here is in the audience as well. I really want to thank Mills River Fire and Rescue for their support and allowing us to use the Fire Station Substation Three for this event and then for the other stations as we work through the year. So we'll have more information as we roll this out. But to start with, like I said, November 24th, Fire Station Three from five to six PM. So please come out, tell your friends. Uh, the other, Julie was great to catch me on one other item as well. I apologize. This evening, we did get an email for item D under the irregular agenda, the audit presentation. Travis Keever, who is going to be coming in to discuss it, unfortunately felt ill today and he will not be able to attend. So what I'm going to ask if council would be so inclined as to when we get to that item to table that to the December 11th meeting and then we'll work on bringing it on to that agenda.
Is that all you got? Okay, motion to approve our amended consent agenda, please. Thanks, Sandra. I think we've put it in an approval box there. Uh, there's a second. Thank you, Brian. Any more discussion on this consent agenda? None? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Hear none? All right, move right along. Our regular agenda, public safety quarterly updates.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to ask for Chief Burnett to come up here and, and for, for our friend Jordan from Henderson County Sheriff's Office as well to come up here and speak on the, an update on the public safety quarterly update. And just as a reminder for council and then for those who are sitting here at home. The last week or the last council meeting, we, we gave a quarterly update on things that are going on within the community. Just due to the time constraints there, we pushed that here. But moving forward again on a quarterly basis, we're going to be bringing in our, our public safety partners to help bring the, provide that update to council and to the community. Chief Burnett, I'm going to turn it over to you. You have a clicker in front of you to push through and see if it works.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, members of council, Scott Burnett, enter and fire chief Mills River Fire Department. Thanks for this opportunity to provide an update to council and our community about a few things at Mills River Fire Department. It did.
All right, then we're going to, we're going to do it manually from behind you.
So we had a really successful fire and life safety education month, last month in October. As y'all know, every year we spend a lot of time in our, our community with fire and life safety education. And we, we really focus on our, our youth and teaching the fire prevention, injury prevention, and also emergency action when there is an emergency. We were at Mills River Elementary, we're at Glenn Marlowe. We also, thank you, had had a number of homeschool associations that we worked with as well, as well as churches and over 2,000 attendees in the month of October. So very busy October, very successful. So we're very proud of that. Thank you. Okay. Also staffing. So as of the first of this month, the we're fully staffed, talked to, to council in the summer about our, our budget, which include an increase of our full-time staff and those positions are now full. And since November 1st, we've been able to consistently have a minimum of three firefighters at the station. Of course, we have 50 volunteers who respond from either work or home here in Mills River. We also have our volunteer staffing, which often we have a fourth person at the station, which our critical task analysis really showed the need for that. So that's exciting to be fully staffed. So we were able to start a drone program. We have a number of pilots at Mills River Fire Department that have been trained. And we were able to implement this through a, a grant from the Office of State Fire Marshal as part of Hurricane Helene recovery. The county is here in Westmore, Carolina, they're impacted. We're able to receive money to improve their emergency management effectiveness. One of the things was a drone and we, we recently had a search mission up South Mills River and that drone was instrumental to help clear a lot of areas. The drone did not find the, the missing member of our community, but it allowed us to clear a lot of, a lot of area really quickly. It's, it was just a minute. Also the mulch fire, which I'll talk about in just a minute, that, that drone was just an amazing tool. It's really taken our capabilities to the next level. So. Station two, the, the station that was, we lost last January to fire. We're still working with an architect to finish up the design. We should have in the next couple of months, a temporary station there that we can utilize. That completion date for that should be 2027. And so our goal for that substation is to have a very similar footprint that, that what was there. So the mulch fire, obviously that's been a significant impact to our community for the last 40 days. Today is, is day number 40 that that fire has been burning. The, the impact is much less today, fortunately than it was 40 days ago, but it's still impactful to our community. Our approach for the first 48 hours, it, it, we were dispatched a little after 2 AM on October 4th. And, and the approach for the first 48 hours was to see if we could extinguish it with water. We, we put over 4 million gallons of water. It became evident that the fire was too deep for that water to penetrate. And so once we no longer had the risk to the cell tower, the propane tank, and then the office there, we're out, our only option left is just to let that fire burn, remove the fuel. The four tools that we have to, to put a fire out. For the four tools that we have to, um, to put a fire out, uh, the only one left was for the fuel to be removed and for it to burn itself out. The, um, Riverside stumped up personnel have been very cooperative, every single thing that we've asked them to do, they have done, everything that, that, uh, they are doing is in our direction. Um, they are not, they have not added any additional fuel to that pile, uh, since October fourth. A lot of work going on there, uh, what they have been doing the last couple of days, this week, is they have been, um, grinding mulch that, that's not part of the fire to allow more room to spread out the pile that's burning. And so that's, that's the operation that's been going on the last couple of days, it's about eighty-five percent of that fuel has been burned away, and so with the additional space that's being opened up, um, very soon, they should be able to spread that out, and we'll be able to put water on it and actually be able to extinguish that. So hopefully we're close to, to the end, as I said, we're, you know, forty days is, is a long time, and, uh, are definitely, um, know this has been a significant impact to our community, especially the folks that live and work right there at that North Mills River and, and two eighty area.
If I may, Chief, just, just for clarification as well, the, the mulch fire itself, um, based off, you said it was very deep within there, based up mulch fire, uh, mulch in essence, you know, has a risk of spontaneous combustion at certain, if it's at certain heights and is not rotated, uh, you know, or, or, or there are multiple different factors in there, so when, when you were talking about it being deep in there, I think it just helped for the community to know. There, there wasn't, there was not a fire that was set on that property or anything else, can you, can you help us?
Yeah, thank you, that, that's exactly right, we have, um, no reason to believe that that fire was started by anything other than spontaneous combustion, which is, um, as you stated, common. With the, uh, the decay of that organic material, it builds up heat and it has nowhere to go. Uh, that, that pile was about seventy-five feet high, and so, uh, the, the, um, the fuel, um, the heat just continued to, uh, um, be contained until it ignited, that's what we believe. Uh, there's no, no reason to believe that it's anything else, but because of the magnitude of the fire, there's no way to definitively tell exactly what started, but there's, there's a high probability that's what it was. Um, talking with our, um, our peers in, in Buncombe County, they had eight mulch piles on fire at one given time, and so just talking with them to try to find out what strategies they were able to use, and in all of them, um, because the piles were, were so massive from the Hurricane Helene debris, um, the strategy for all eight in, in Buncombe County was to do exactly what we're doing, and just to, to let the fuel be removed. Um, the, the Riverside stump dump, they have an incinerator. Um, but there's so much dirt in that pile that it really would not be effective to incinerate. Buncombe County did some of that, um, just to get some of their pile size down. Um, but, um, unfortunately, that's, that's really the strategy that, uh, with, with the, uh, the Hurricane Helene debris that, that's out there, and the size of these piles, um, that's, that's our only approach unfortunately is just to let them burn. All right, what questions from Council could I answer?
Uh, if you're looking to put on any more staff, and you think you're going to be here for the next few years.
I, I think we're going to be good for the next few years, um, our critical task analysis really showed that, that we needed to have four at the station to be able to get those first trucks out, to get, uh, those initial operations on scene. Um, we, we continue to add to our volunteer base, we got one new volunteer this week, and so, um, we're, we're very blessed here in Mills River, and that we have, uh, um, an active community that, that volunteers as firefighters, and, uh, not a lot of communities, um, you know, have that, and, and we do here in Mills River, it's something really special, and so because of that, um, yes, sir, I think that, that we, we, um, we're going to be good with our, our current staffing level for some time.
And we've been able to maintain our ratings, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yep, absolutely.
Everybody's homeowners, just low as we can run it.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yeah, thank you, thanks for your support.
Yeah.
Yep. That, that is an express, so the board of directors at, at Mills River, they had a number of things they wanted me to accomplish, and um, one was, uh, to, to evaluate where we were at and where we needed to go, and so, um, uh, we've accomplished a lot of those things, we've accomplished, um, uh, identifying that we had a staffing need, we identified, uh, a compensation need. Uh, we identified a, a need to, to make sure that all of our standard operating guidelines and bylaws were, uh, you know, current in, in twenty twenty-five, and so, uh, we're, we're getting, um, uh, very, very close to that, and so as far as an exact timeline, um, I, I do not have that, but, um, I, I think that, um, uh, soon we'll start that process of, of doing a search, uh, for a permanent fire chief, and, um, uh, you know, hopefully, hopefully, uh, um, early, uh, twenty twenty-six, uh, we'll have a, a new fire chief seated, but, uh, not, there's not a, not a, a set timeline right yet.
All we got. All right, leave it on you, sir.
Well, thank y'all, Council, for having us here tonight, uh, tonight, I'm stepping in for y'all, District Captain Darren Whitaker, he was out tonight, so he's asking me to step in. I'm just going to go over some stuff for the, uh, quarterly stuff that we had, um, biggest things that I've got is a call for Mills River, um, for y'all's last quarter. Uh, Mills River alone ran one thousand one hundred and seventy-six calls for service. That includes everything, that is your security checks, traffic stops, uh, responding to, uh, emergency nine-one-one calls, domestics, um, you know, your alarm calls, business calls, um, out of all of that, in that quarter, you had twenty-three arrests um, out of that, and you had a total of forty-one citations, um, issued in that time, and that is going to be everything that's going to be traffic related, whether it's speeding, um, any type of chapter twenty violations. Um, yeah, I know there's been some concerns of, uh, we've had some complaints of speed up here on one ninety-one, we've had some with dump trucks coming through and stuff like that, so we are trying to, you know, get people out here, working that area pretty good, um, you know, we get complaints on that all the time. Um, also too, trying to get some up there around the school stuff and school zones, um. But, um, for the most part, those are your calls for service, um, biggest things that we have going on right now, there is a spree of, uh, you have some breaking and enters occurring, uh, if y'all are aware, I'm sure y'all know the arsenal pest control right down here has been broken into, uh, had some stuff taken out of it. Um, it's getting close to the holidays right now, so this is going to be picking up. Um, biggest thing is like the community needs to be aware of is, you know, locking doors, you know, it don't make it easy for somebody to get in. Uh, trim bushes back because what they're looking for is somewhere they can get in and get out with, uh, you know, like concealment or cover. Um, so we are seeing a ration with that, I know Amazon packages and stuff are coming around too, people are ordering stuff for Christmas presents. That is where a lot of stuff is going to be starting to be taken off, um, you know, they're going to be taking that stuff. So those are the biggest things that we've got right now, um, of course, I'm sure y'all are aware, uh, with the Mills River cars, we've, uh, changed it, uh, where we, we're doing a three-month rotation um, on that, um, and at any point, if y'all have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer anything on that, but from the law enforcement side, I think things are going pretty good in Mills River. Um, like I said, the biggest thing is, is just the, the breaking and interns right now, and trying to slow down some traffic on one ninety-one.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
It's life on the line every day, we're very blessed to have our Sergeant Heatherly.
Yeah.
Um, I shouldn't say that in front of you, but we, we certainly won when we got him, we, we miss gym player, but, uh, we're in good hands, and, you know, think about our deputies when you see them stopped or highway patrol, that's the most dangerous thing, because when they walk up to that car, they don't know what's in there, so we appreciate you and what you do.
Thank you.
Y'all got anything? Uh, dog, uh, pitcher, is that what you call it, or?
Animal, yes.
Animal, of course, are them calls in, in, tied in with those calls also?
Yes, sir, they are, yes, sir, yes, they will be included.
Big part, am I?
Absolutely, yes, they are a very busy unit, we have all types of calls that come in, but yes, they deal with all types, that is probably one of our busiest units.
Got you. Uh, noise ordinances, is, is, y'all had to deal with that much out here in Mills River?
No, we do not, no, we hardly have anything with that, usually if it's something in Mills River, it's somebody out there discharging a firearm, and it, you know, there, somebody's calling, complaining, and we have to, we'll go out there, explain to them, there's nothing illegal with shooting a firearm, um, it's just going out there and make sure they're doing it in a safe manner, um, and you know, in proper backstop, something like that, but a lot of times people call in because, and it's not at eleven o'clock at night, it could be three, four o'clock in the afternoon, and they're calling in, so.
About two and a half months ago, uh, this woman reached out to me, and she'd already contacted y'all, but I guess a stray bullet had entered into their house, into the bathroom.
Okay.
And they found the actual bullet, and I guess some of y'all's people worked for several days trying to.
Figure out where it come from?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that would be something at that point where CID or Criminal Investigation Division would have come out there and tried to see where the ballistics and everything had come from.
Got you.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I have nothing else, appreciate that.
All right, thank y'all, Council, appreciate it.
If I may, uh, uh, Mayor and Council, I just want to quickly say that I, I just want to thank both of them as well, Captain Warren and Chief Burnett, well, not just for this work, but also we continue to have conversations about, uh, you know, as we work through the strategic planning process and the objectives and the action items are there, and then also the data that's going to be behind that, so they've been instrumental in continuing to have those conversations, and we're working through what that can look like over, you know, throughout the span of the strategic planning process, but also, um, we just had, and, um, they both, uh, both Henderson County Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department have been instrumental in working with us on having that joint organizational approach to potential future emergencies, so, and, but then this quarter, we also did hold uh, uh, a mock emergency situation to run through what an emergency operations center would look like, and, and going through real life scenarios, so actually Henderson County Emergency Management ran it, so again, multiple parts of organizations coming in, and we're, we're excited about seeing what that product looks like as well, and then implementing it, so I just wanted to thank them and thank the organizations for their continued support on making sure that, you know, we're continuing to meet the needs, the future needs of the town of Mills River across the board in public safety, so thank you all.
Thank you, have a great night. All right, moving right along, our FEMA project update.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, uh, I'm excited to introduce to you, uh, tonight, uh, Luke Baker, he's our project manager and geologist with T R C, which is the engineering firm um, that, um, as we work through the FEMA process, we've been talking a lot over time about projects and initiatives that are result, you know, that we're trying to work on for the recovery effort, and now that, uh, thanks to your guidance at the last meeting as well, we're in a position to, uh, to bring Luke here to provide an update from his perspective on where we're at with that before moving forward.
Great, well, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board. Um, as Matt said, my name's Luke Baker, I'm a project manager with T R C Engineers. Um, also our disaster recovery coordinator, uh, for the North Carolina region, so I work out of our carry office, but I've worked through, um, I believe Helene will be my fifth disaster at this point, so, um, I've been involved with Tropical Storm Fred, Matthew Lawrence, Helene. So, um, pleasure to be here today. So, uh, so yeah, um, so just at a high level, T R C Engineers, we're a full-service civil engineering firm. Um, we're located kind of all across North Carolina and the Mid-Atlantic, but really specialized in, in really any sort of civil engineering and structural survey you may need, so. Um, so the first thing I kind of wanted to hit on is a comparison between the FEMA public assistance process and what we think of with a, a typical design or construction process, and so we'll get into kind of the nitty-gritty of a, of a typical FEMA P A, um, on the next few slides, but the main thing that I want to draw out of this is the comparison of really how much portion of that FEMA P A process is the upfront documentation and information reviews before you actually get into, um, where you see the purple at the end, that's our construction. Um, so there's a, a lot of upfront documentation that FEMA wants to look at and review, and, and go back and forth, and we'll get into that a little bit more about, you know, what exactly that looks like, but. Um, so typical FEMA P A process, uh, begins with a recovery scoping meeting, and this is just a, a meeting with the FEMA personnel and city staff um, to identify, you know, hey, what, what potential impacts did you have? Um, after that meeting, there's a set window that the town has to provide um, all damages that, that they've encountered, so that's a sixty-day window, it's very, very quick after that initial meeting. Um, so we've, we've already completed that step, we were brought in, in March to help the town through the FEMA P A process. Um, that boots-on-the-ground assessment, and the report was turned in and a little undermined. Um, so very quick turnaround on that, overall, um, FEMA P A projects are grouped into very siloed sections, so you may have infrastructure that's park-related versus utilities versus roads, culverts, um, and then your debris, so. Um, once we get through our, uh, damage assessment phase, then we begin to work through project scoping and cost estimates. So this is really important for FEMA to understand what the extent of the repair is going to be. Um, if there's any hazard mitigation that may be needed to prevent that damage from happening again in the future, um, and then understanding what potential costs may be so that they can set an allocation aside for the actual implementation of that project. Um, we work through those memos, putting together a tentative scope work, um, and then also a cost estimate, we use R S Means, which is the same software that FEMA uses when they develop these themselves. Um, that all goes into a very convoluted, um, cost estimating format that FEMA uses, that's the beautiful Excel table there that you can see of, of all of the different things that they take into account, so. Um, once they've got those scope of work, uh, memorandums and cost estimates, then they work through their eligibility determinations and final approvals, so they want to make sure that you own the asset that you're claiming is damaged, they want to make sure that you maintain it. Um, it's not something that we've kind of let, let deteriorate over time, and now we're trying to claim. Um, they want to make sure that there's no cultural issues or historic preservation that we need to be aware of and protect. Um, and then they also want to review the recommended scope of work and the costs. So once the final determination is made, this is usually a very back-and-forth process with FEMA. Um, they always have questions and want to see records of maintenance and all these fun things. Um, but then FEMA will make a final determination that project moves from the federal government to the state to implement the actual recovery and, and help manage those funds. Um, so currently, we have two projects at the town that are in this final determination phase. That's the repairs to the tennis court and the repairs to the, um, the outfield fence scene and the foul pole line on the baseball field.
Luke, if I may, just jump in there real quick.
Sure.
You, you, you don't have to go back, but just as a quick aside for, uh, as Council may remember, we, uh, we did receive a denial letter on, uh, the initial denial letter on the baseball field, so as Luke mentioned, you know, on paper, it says, well, you go to this step, you go to this step, but really, I, I want to stress the back-and-forth nature of this conversation. And so, um, for instance, with the baseball field, talking about maintenance records, you know, the people at FEMA aren't on the ground, they are, you know, sitting somewhere else, they've never, you know, potentially even seen this project, so then, when they're making those determinations, uh, it then takes staff time, and it took, uh, uh, T R C and others' time, at Land of Sky, our partners there, putting together responses to it because they may have questions saying, this doesn't, you know, this may or may not appear to be updated based off of Google Maps images, or, or, you know, we, you know, they're, they're trying to determine the photos and how those work, so then it's constantly trying to get more supportive background for them, I think the determination, I mean, it probably took, I think it was about thirty, or sixty days from the the denial letter to then respond, we hit that about, about forty, forty-five days, just because of the amount of time it takes to collect that information, and so that's back in FEMA's queue, so I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we're waiting on that response, and based off of that response, we may have to, you know, there may be another conversation.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're super particular when it comes to these eligibility determinations. Um, I've had them go back and look at Google Street View from several years ago, and, and be like, well, that looks pretty, pretty close, so. Um, it's very important that, you know, we, we get as much documentation as we can, and it just takes a, what feels like an extreme amount of time. Um, so once we move through FEMA's final determinations, that's when we really begin our, our typical design process, so the upfront is all um, documentation and, and eligibility reviews and, and kind of upfront documentation that then once we have that, um, determination, then we get to begin actually repairing, um, the asset, so. Once we move through the design, um, we follow the federal government's procurement guidelines. So their threshold for formal bidding is a little bit lower than the state of North Carolina's. Um, so it in turn kind of leads to a little bit longer advertisement. Um, but it's kind of just a stipulation because we're using federal funds. We, we want to be held to the strictest standard. So. Um, after that point, then it moves into construction implementation. Um, for debris removal, you may have monitors that come out and make sure that the debris removed is actually debris and not. You know, not trees or brush that was removed for access. Um, they want to make sure that you're complying with those environmental and historic preservation requirements. Um, if you have any, say, stream or wetland permits that you had to get, you're working through those. Um, and then also just general construction quality control. So is the contractor building, um, to the plan, what we've asked them to. So that's really at a very high level FEMA's public assistance process. Like Matt said, it, it seems very simple and cut and dry. Um, they're not, but they're always a back and forth process and a lot of questions and, and everything else. So. Um, kind of to take us back to the, to the timeline, that kind of just refreshes y'all's memory as far as how that compares to a typical process. Um, where are, are a couple of town projects are working through that? Um, and then on the next couple of slides, we'll talk about. Um, our plan for the Meadow restoration, which we're going to use more of a traditional design approach, um, design construction approach. With FEMA, um, requirements in mind.
And Luke, if I may, just one last piece on that. The reason why, I believe from the staff's perspective, we're still going forward with the. The FEMA approval process for the tennis courts and for the baseball field is the, those facilities are still. Able to be used in their current form. And so being able to go through that is the most fiscally sound way. To make sure that those, those projects are going to be eligible while at the same time, they are still able to be used by, by the community. And so that, that I just wanted to provide that little context. Whereas the Meadow, and again, with the guidance from council last week as well, talk through this a little bit. About the, the difference.
Sure. Yeah. So, um, like Matt said, traditional PA process is the really safest way. To ensure that you're getting or maximizing your reimbursement amount. Um, for the Northern Loop repairs, the Meadow restoration, what. I understand council wants to move forward with is really more of a traditional approach and then seeking that. Um, eligibility determination and then obviously reimbursement sort of in conjunction with a design. So we can really get this ball rolling. Um, for the Northern Loop repairs, if it was to move through a typical PA process, there are about four different. Categories of projects in the Northern Loop area, um, between the debris, the park elements, the gravel parking lot. The ditches and culverts in the back. So each one of those is reviewed by FEMA independently of one another by combining them. From a design and a construction approach, um, increases efficiency, increases costs or decreases. So. This process that we proposed allows the design and repair to move forward. Um, it is faster because we're overlapping some of those eligibility determinations. For the design, obviously there is some risk in there. Um, you know, as we've seen FEMA will deny things and have questions and. Um, the Northern Loop project is, is probably likely going to have questions too. So. Um, the goal of this project is really to prioritize access to the river and to the trail. Get folks back in those areas as quickly as possible. Um, and then really minimize any further impact to park or town operations with that stuff. Um, so this is at a high level, our tentative recovery timeline for the Northern Loop project. Um, we're ready to begin design, um, basically upon notification from the town. Um, we've outlined basically a ninety day design to beginning procurement timeline. Um, we've proposed to overlap some of the permitting requirements with the procurement processes. So that those run in conjunction with one another and we're maximizing as much time as we possibly can. Um, but ultimately, we think right now we're looking at likely a beginning of April mobilization of a contractor. To begin that work. Um, what we had talked about with, with Matt is having a critical path project, which is the. Um, accessibility projects and the river access projects first. And then focusing on some of the other Northern Loop projects, such as the actual Meadow restoration secondary, so that we can get access. For folks first, um, while we work on the kind of ancillary repair projects to restore the entire area back.
If I, if I may as well, just the, the timeline at the beginning, um. Because, because we're going to be seeking federal reimbursement, uh, and Julie can correct me on this. It's that if you suspect. Uh, the cost being over a certain threshold, you have to go through the formal bidding process. And so for that reason. Not, you know, still working through on exactly what that, you know, those cost estimates are, the, the, the approach that we're taking is going through that formal bidding process. And which is going to take, require a sixty day bid, um, or. I'm sorry?
Thirty day.
The thirty day, sorry, a thirty day, sorry, I apologize. And so the, uh, so there, there's a timeline that's automatically built within that, that. Um, that we're looking at and approaching. The other thing I just wanted to mention as well as, um, and thanks to Luke for this and, and, and to the, to the staff. Is that we had a feeling that, oh, uh, you know, it's a reminder for everyone that, you know, we were working through the county. At first, and, and so that's why, you know, uh, you know, thank, thank you to the county for all of their hard work on trying to make this project work. Uh, just and both with the timeline and with our expectation, we, we just had to take it back over. We started getting a feeling of those concerns in early August. And so we actually started the conversation around this, planning for this potential scenario and I think it was about mid-August. And so, um, so now having this guidance, we're, we, we've been working through this simultaneously with the other one still being the lead. To now we're able to hit the ground running on this. So there was actually no real delay. Uh, necessarily, we're still, you know, pretty much, unfortunately, I wish it was faster. Uh, however, we're as fast as possible because we, we, uh, we, we felt that this may be. The net, the, the other approach that needed to be happening. So we've been talking about it for the last three months or so. So, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so as far as next steps, um. We're continuing to support the town as we work through FEMA's eligibility reviews for the, really for all of the projects. So as they work through their review, if they have questions or need anything, um, Matt and I talk fairly frequently. So anything that's needed from a, from an engineering perspective, cost perspective, we're, we're supporting you all with that. And then the design of the Northern Loop prepares. So, um, we're ready to begin with that. Once, once we get, you know, authorization to proceed. I expect that to happen, you know, hopefully before the end of the month. So that would put us kind of on track with the timeline that y'all saw. Um, as far as construction goes, we've got our critical path in mind as far as what is most important to us to, to get access back as quickly as possible. Um, and then obviously continue to minimize impacts to, to citizens and, and town operations. So.
The one final thing I would just mention, or and I failed to mention on the formal bidding side is that if, uh, with the triggering of the formal bidding process. Council would have to approve the final bid as well. So again, depending on timing of that and what that looks like. Uh, once we have an idea exactly what that timeline is, I'm going to be informing you all to try to, uh, best understand how we're going to approach that. So that again, we're moving it as quickly as possible through that process while feeling comfortable with the project.
How, how do these, uh, people that's willing to make a bid, how does, what does it take for them qualified to work on this? So they gotta have special credentials?
So we follow the state guidance for, for, um, as far as licensing. So they'll have to have contractors licenses. Um, because this triggers a formal bid, we require bonding for the bid and then performance and payment bonds during the actual implementation.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Yes, so the, the town has a, um, it's called a project delivery manager, EDMG. Um, and that's a representative from FEMA assigned to the town as well as, you know, they have several. Um, but that's your main point of contact. So they, they're the ones that take in the information that's provided to them. They kind of disseminate it to whoever, you know, is assisting them with reviews or other things. But you do have a, a, a person at FEMA that, you know, you've got a name and a number.
When you say a person at FEMA, how often does that person change?
Has y'all's changed? Okay. It, it varies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So to, to that point, it, it has changed for us. Some places it's, it's changed more. Some places in Henderson County, they've had the same. So maybe it really is depending on, you know, the rollout and that, and those elements.
Yeah.
Any other question? Appreciate what you're doing.
Absolutely. Thanks, y'all. And, uh, that's my contact information. Um, if y'all, anything else comes up, feel free to reach out.
All right, will do.
Thank you.
Be careful when you travels.
Okay.
Okay. You need anything else from us on that? Is that just an update?
Uh, that was just an update for you all. And, uh, like I said, I wanted to provide an update on the timeline now for the North Loop specifically, but, uh. Uh, what we, what we didn't mention yet is, yeah, those documents are now in our hands. We're reviewing them from our perspective on what he's provided. And we'll be trying to move that process as fast as possible.
Well, we'll move on to see discussion concerning our P card system.
Yeah, I'm going to let, uh, Julie Osteen drive the train on, uh, on, uh, this item. Perfect. All right. Julie's going to use this one.
Okay, so back in August, um, council approved the amendment to the purchasing policy. Part of that purchasing policy was a new procurement card system. So Matt asked that we look at alternatives for our credit card system that we currently have. So I have re, I reached out to four of our local banks. Uh, two of those banks told us that we did not have the purchasing threshold requirements. In order to follow their procurement policy, their procurement, uh, P card system. Um, were too small. The P card system requires a minimum of six hundred thousand dollars. To be spent in a credit card situation annually. We can't come close to that because our biggest expenditures are with the Mills River Fire Department and the Henderson County Sheriff's Department. So those two pretty much said, we, we would love to help you, but we can't. Um, so we looked at a couple others. Uh, one of those was very, very, very. Um, had a lot of the things that everybody, all the department heads were looking for as in, uh, more controls. The ability to take a picture of a receipt so that we don't have as many lost receipts as we currently have. Um, that has gotten better, but we still have a few of those. Um, and so Home Trust Bank actually has a full. Mini version of a procurement system, which is what we, um, are recommending that council give us direction. To proceed with that. And if you do so, give us that direction, then in December, we will bring a resolution to council. Um, authorizing Home Trust as another bank depository for the town, um, which will be the first step in. Completing that syst, or getting that system in place so that we can have more controls over expenditures.
And if I may, Julie, though, thank you so much for that. Uh, just as a reminder, the, the rationale for moving to a. Uh, procurement card or P card process is multifaceted. And the first one mainly is right now, we have a couple of. We have some departmental cards. We have a couple of store cards, et cetera. They're on different statements. They're, 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 they're rather rigid on their, on their, uh. On the amounts and their limits, et cetera. And so what really what we're trying to look for is greater transparency and accountability. When it comes actually to who's using those cards and when, what are their balances as, as well as increased efficiency. Because we'll be able to both, as, as Julie mentioned, be able to scan those receipts in. Uh, so there's electronic version of it and we can, uh, better control the statement timeline and process for that. So instead of, you know, one card. You know, as anybody who may have multiple credit cards, you know, one statement's on the fifth, the other one's on the thirteenth, the other one's on the twenty-seventh. It allows us to be able to put it all within one window. And then, as I mentioned, that greater accountability and transparency, we could look at staff members. In a card, um, instead of it being a departmental card that's assigned to an individual, we have, we have the control to be able to say, what's that limit? That they're able to spend. When they hit it, we need to have conversations about that. So truly being able to have an understanding of how the money is being spent and why, and then being able to adjust accordingly. That, those are the multiple reasons why we're looking at that. And so to Julie.
Also allows us to, oh, set what is an allowable expense and what is not an allowable expense. Since statute says there are certain things we can and cannot purchase with town money.
Exactly. And, and, you know, it, one of, one of the things that I think about quite a bit is, you know, travel. For training purposes, you know, traveling is expensive. Having a card that goes with that individual, we don't want to put the burden on that individual. We'll be using the personal money to get reimbursed. Having this type of card, we could look at it and then have a sign off opportunity to say, hey, you're going to go off. We've approved these funds to be spent because hotels cost a certain amount of money, et cetera. We can go in in real time and adjust those funds to be able to allow for that. But then immediately be able to adjust back down once they come back. So again, that flexibility while having accountability. Is going to be something that I think is going to be a, a great benefit to the commu, uh, to the organization.
Julie, at the, at the end of the month, the end of the year, do you get like a summary of maybe, does it break it down? Fuel, lodging, da, 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 da.
A system with Home Trust will, yes. We will do that.
That would be a handy budget in school as well.
Correct, we do not.
Anything else?
There is no fee for the cards. There will be, um, those will be determined by the department heads. As to who they feel needs a card. Um, and then those, those needs will be presented to, to Matt. Um, to make the final decision as to, yes, this person we approve for a card or not. There are no fees, uh, with Home Trust or with First Bank, which were the two, uh, options. Uh, but First Bank did not have the, uh, receipt capture option.
So with, I'm sure there's interest applied, but is with no fee, there's, but.
There would not be any interest unless we didn't pay the.
So I guess they require you to put so much money in their bank to.
They did not. Neither one, neither First, uh, neither First Bank nor Home Trust, um, required their own bank account with them. That's correct. So all we need is direction from council as to if you wish for us to proceed with this, then we will bring that resolution to you in December.
But by consensus, move forward.
Thank you.
Move along, move along.
With the new, with the new, um, the, the newer program, yes, we will. Um, and they will, those points will be able to be used, um, for other.
Are you running for it on?
No comment.
Okay, um, so it's my understanding with, uh, Mr. Keever being ill tonight. We're looking to table our audit presentation until December the eleventh. Is that, uh, do you need a motion to do such?
Do I make a motion to table the audit discussion?
Brian, is there any discussion on why we're doing it, what we're doing? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
In your post? There none. Other business?
So we, we will be, uh, advertising that there's a possible quorum, uh, that's, uh, at that event. Um, so you, yeah, and you know, council members may be able, may attend that event incident within the audience. The, the idea, again, from my understanding from council is that the two council members would be the ones that would be a part of the, the, the official. Guidance of that discussion. Uh, but we are going to put it as a potential quorum. Sorry. It is. Yes. It's a, it's a loaded question. I, I have not been informed that, uh, that curbside, uh, that, that, uh, storm debris pickup has ended. Uh, and so what I would recommend is that people who still have storm debris on, uh, the sides of the roads, that they're, still go through the Henderson County website and through the, the pages, the, um, the, the storm debris site, uh, and follow it. I think there's still an email address that people can send their addresses in and what they have there. Uh, on the speed of that pickup and under the, the current circumstances that, uh, again, uh, that have been publicly stated around storm debris pickup, um, I can't discuss. I, I have no timeline on what that would look like. However, again, uh, that's my understanding is it's still open and available for people to use, uh, and, and put that information out there. They're not actively going around and looking again for the past probably six months or more. You've had to put in your address for that. My understanding that still exists. I would, I would never want to give that guidance, uh, from, from, from this seat. I would say that the, if it's storm debris and you've put in, uh, and you've put in your address and nothing has been picked up, to continue to email and put your address in there. Uh, you know, periodically to make sure it continues to stay on the list, that it hasn't been overlooked. Or, or that it's been, you know, there, there are a lot of, and there's a lot of information going to there. So I'd recommend anyone to continue putting that information into the system. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I just hear a motion to adjourn our regular meeting. I need a second.
Awesome.
Thank you, Sandra. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Or none? Uh, I need a motion to adjourn our business meeting. Thank you, Brian. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor? Aye. Hey. Alright, when we give a chance and then staff gets caught up, we'll just start our street lighting discussion. Kind of disappears, don't it? Like having green on on the green wall.
So, um, at the, uh, September twenty-fifth meeting, uh, when there was discussion of the Haywood Road Wiping Project, I believe there was a informal request at that meeting for looking into the possibility of putting streetlights at South NC two eighty, Boilston Highway. And that kind of led staff to, uh, look into what streetlights the town actually has. Um, as you may know, the town has provided street lighting since two thousand and five. It's one of our core services as a municipality. This works. Kevin, thanks. Oh, I haven't. There we go. Um, so the first ones, um, let me, let me stop and go back. To my knowledge, the town's never done a full audit or known where all of our streetlights are. There have been encroachment agreements and different files, but we've never had a full audit done and understood where all of our streetlight assets are. And so the town manager and myself reached out to Duke Energy. Um, we did have to sign a confidentiality agreement because Duke no longer shares the exact location of their infrastructure assets anymore. Um, but we were able to take that and basically put together this presentation and show where street lighting is in the town that the town pays for. So again, going back, uh, the first ones in oh-five were installed along Haywood Road, uh, near the intersection with Banner Farm Road and also, uh, around the intersection of Schoolhouse, Turnpike and two eighty. Um, more were in, streetlights were installed in two thousand and six, and then the town actually has added streetlights over the years, um, in response to citizen requests and, and council requests for additional lighting. So believe it or not, we have eighty streetlights at eight key intersections in the town. Um, those lights are spread out, so, um, some of them may be, you know, fifty feet to one section of, uh, side of the intersection, some may be on the other side. The point is to light the path for the vehicles coming in. Um, one thing I noted when we had, um, some streetlight repair requests out in your fanning fields is there's a bunch of very old, uh, sodium bulb lights out there that produce low levels of light and don't have newer type fixtures, uh, that ensures that light is completely downcast towards the ground. Um, there are also eh, higher energy consuming fixtures. So those put out about, um, a hun- or, excuse me, consume a hundred and fifty-six kilowatt hours per fixture, whereas an LED light, and we've got twenty-five of those, uh, consume approximately sixty-six kilowatt hours per fixture. So for all the streetlights the town pays for, for all eighty, it's about ten thousand plus kilowatt hours per month, which is a little over fifteen hundred dollars, uh, in billable expenses to the town. So townwide, uh, I took this map of the town and basically put those yellow, uh, circles where the intersections are lighted. So just a, a zoomed out perspective, um, these are the primary areas, areas of the town where the town pays for and has installed streetlights. So starting at the north and going south, um, the first intersection that is lit up, uh, with town streetlights is Fanning Fields and Boilston Highway. So we have thirteen there. Those are all the old high pressure sodium bulbs. Those are actually the ones we had a service call, um, or, um, a ci- a citizen submitted an inquiry because a few of those had, uh, gone out. Now again, Duke Energy will come out and replace those bulbs. Um, but if, if the town wanted to replace the fixtures to something different, that's a different process. And again, there's three, thirteen streetlights, uh, around those, that intersection. So coming further south on Boilston, we have Butler Bridge Road and Boilston Highway. Uh, fourteen streetlights there. Those are all LED fixtures. Uh, coming into the commercial core of town, we have Old Haywood Road and Boilston Highway. There are ten streetlights around that intersection. Two are LED and eight of those are the old high pressure sodium bulbs. Coming a little further south, North Mill, North Mills River Road and Boilston Highway, we've got ten lights there. Again, a mixture, uh, three LEDs and seven high pressure sodium bulbs. And again, spread out around that intersection to light the different, uh, paths of vehicles. Um, we have some of the original ones, I believe the town placed, uh, at Haywood Road and Banner Farm, there's five there. One of those is an LED, four of those are the old high pressure sodium bulbs. Um, and then also, uh, between River Oak and Town Center Drive, there's three streetlights there, all LED fixtures. I believe I said, uh, Schoolhouse, Turnpike and Boilston, these ones I think were added in oh-five or oh-six. Um, one of them is an LED fixture, but ten of them are all the older high pressure sodium bulbs for a total of eleven streetlights along those approaches. And then I believe lastly, we have Ray Hill Forge Mountain and Boilston Highway. There's thirteen streetlights around there. One LED, twelve old high pressure sodium bulbs. So again, just zooming out, this is the coverage we have currently. There was that informal request for, um, lighting at South Mills River Road and NC two eighty. And so really the, those two, uh, points of feedback staff's looking for is, uh, you know, is there a consensus of ca- council that wants staff to investigate new streetlight locations? I think we heard South Mills River Road, um, from a resident or someone that attended that last meeting. But again, open to additional recommendations from council. And then another thing, um, is does council want to look into converting, um, excuse me, does council want to look into converting those old high pressure sodium bulbs to newer LED? And again, uh, since we do have an outdoor lighting ordinance now, that's not totally dark sky, um, compliant, but, uh, it goes along that path. The, the, the new fixtures Duke Energy puts out for the streetlights are all full cutoff compliant. So again, the intent is the lighting is not coming out, um, which also is good for vehicle safety as well, but it's going to be completely downcast. And then, uh, in the long term, I would need to run some numbers, um, but it, it could save the town money based on the energy used. Um, preliminarily, I reached out to our contact with Duke. There, there would be a one-time fixture charge fee per fixture change. I believe it runs thirty to fifty dollars a fixture. But again, um, I would need more concrete direction to basically go to them, um, with a proposed plan for them to come back with concrete numbers. But really just want to provide you all a summary of where those assets are and, uh, give us a chance for, for the direction. Thanks.
I noticed some of these lights, since these LED lights are, uh, are blue, they cast a blue tint. Is there a reason? Does anybody know a reason for that?
So, well, some of them have different color temperatures of the light, but if you see an actual like true blue, almost purplish one, that's a malfunctioning LED bulb.
Okay.
So that can be, we actually had one, gosh, it was over a year ago at Butler Bridge and two eighty, right near the, the dog care facility.
That makes sense.
And all I did was go on the Duke website, submit a request, and they replaced the bulb. And a few weeks later, it was, uh, normal color.
Awesome.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to say I definitely am, am in favor of replacing the streetlights. If we have fifty-five lights, and I'm not texting, this is my Hewlett Packard app, because all engineers use Hewlett Packard calculators. Um, the, um, cost is somewhere around sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. Is that for fifty-five lights?
Sorry, the total monthly cost of-
No, 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 no.
The, the change, yeah.
Thirty dollar replacement.
It, it would vary and, and that's where I'd have to go back with specifics to them.
So we'd pay for that two months. From then on out, one of the things to, to think about with LEDs, they're bright. Um, when I was at the city of Asheville, we managed the streetlight program and we had sixty-five hundred streetlights. And through a grant, we replaced five thousand five hundred of them with LEDs. And the money that went back into the general fund was hundreds of thousands of dollars a year.
The best I remember, some of these lights actually went in LED with grant. It may be even something new as years ago. But it's also my understanding that when we got on this program, it was costing us so much per light per month, that none of this, the, do we actually have meters on all this stuff now that we're actually getting, uh?
There's a set rate they charge because I believe Duke Energy calculates out, um, and there's different rates for different utility users. To, though, as a public entity, we get a, a, a public lighting rate versus, uh, you put in a pole in your backyard with a Duke light on it. And so there is a set rate where Duke calculates, okay, this is a public street light that's going to be running this many hours a day approximately. And they know it's approximate energy usage, and so that factors into it.
So the LEDs would be charged to us a different rate than the high sodiums?
Correct.
Good.
May not be half or-
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's primarily based on that energy usage calculation factoring into their rate.
Okay. Awesome.
No.
Load the switch.
They will put a new sodium bulb in it.
Asheville owned fifty-five hundred lights, the rest were Duke leased. Any new lights that we got were provided by Duke. And they would give us, um, you know, a monthly rate for them. I'm sure there's grants available to somehow, somehow to replace those because that's a big drain on their infrastructure, which, you know, can certainly be lessened. One thing to think about is the colors. As a traffic engineer, my wife's saying, he said it again, as a traffic engineer, I like the higher temperature because it adds the contrast, it brings it out. You know, somebody who's de- desperate to be walking, that higher temperature really makes them shine. The lower temperature is more of a yellow light, and that's easier on your eyes and your night vision, et cetera. So, you know, that's one of the questions you all or we or somebody might be asking at some point to think about. Um, yeah, somewhere there's a compromise.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
If I made you sure quick, uh, you, you did mention, uh, like up on one ninety-one and two eighty, uh, with the publics coming in and the, and the commercial area coming in, is there any discussion? You had, you had discussed, uh, that there were certain, you know, certain li- streetlights that are currently there. Is there any, uh, planned change within that area that would be helpful that, or that you know about?
No, but we should look into that.
There's some problems. It's easier, I don't know, all things with those, that lamp on, it's ready. The last red light or the last night light now, it's there. Half the time it looks like it's not on, and when you get there, it's usually barely shat. That's about it all. So I don't know what kind of fault that is, but that's one.
So from a staff perspective, do you think, uh, have y'all even looked into any grant opportunities at all at this point?
This was really more just information gathering and a response to that inquiry request.
So how do y'all feel about definitely getting, uh, a price to get those LEDs installed and then asking around about some grant opportunities also?
I'm in favor of it, and I'm also in favor of staff. If you have a request and you go out and you determine there's a need, put up a light. And we're not going to end up lighting all of Mills River, uh, because not everybody wants it, but there are some intersections where it would be nice to have some lights up.
Southern Mills River one is. Back at the very eye.
Well, it's, it's, it's really dark. I've had people on the bridge walking, and you're coming and they're not walking at you, they're walking with you. And if they're on dark clothes, uh, and there's very little room on that bridge, it's sketchy. Because you're there right there on them before you see them.
Think switch all over that LED would be a smart move.
Mm-hmm. You know, what else?
So new, eh, if we do the fixture switches, that most likely would be the case is that, you know, and again, I'd have to confirm that with our partners at Duke Energy, but, um, I would think they would send a crew out and do all that at once. And again, it would be many fixtures. Um, for new lights, it is a longer process because it's a NC DOT encroachment agreement. Um, you know, basically the engineers at Duke Energy have to work with the engineers at DOT, and then again with the town. And again, eh, we don't own these assets, they are leased, um, for the, for that set rate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but am I right? There's a consensus to look into the switchover, but also lighting at South Mills and two eighty?
Yeah, for sure.
One question I'd have is this for adding sites? Maybe there's an option for something other than a telephone pole with the old Cobra light?
Hmm.
Yeah. Maybe something with a, with a more aesthetic pleasing.
Thank you.
They, Duke Energy has a lot of different light fixture and pole styles, so that would be the, the decorative poles. Um, and again, um, that's something we can come back to council with pricing sheets.
Sure.
It'll cost a little more.
Yeah.
And, you know, fiberglass versus metal and, you know, what style you want. Do we, planning board, do we want to have a town style of lights then that if it's not mounted on a pole, it's going to look like this? There's, we can talk, streetlights, yeah. But it's all those things. I mean, is that part of our identity? And when the road project on one ninety-one comes in, those lights, we want them to look, hey, you're in Mills River now, these are our lights, you know, that kind of thing. It's our capital.
Well.
I don't know that everyone likes this.
And actually, since, uh, Councilman Moore mentioned the Haywood Road project, um, just talking about lighting in general and, uh, mounting options, we did find out through DOT that all of the signals, the traffic signal poles and mast arms for the widening project will be, uh, a dark green color. Yeah, for, yeah, federal green.
As the standard. Again, there's a conversation outside of that, but we, we, we did ask the question about, you know, what were their plan, plans were for that. So at minimum, it would not be the, you know, the metal pole kind of look.
Yeah. DOT has always opened the conversation about local betterments, which again, would cost the town, um, funds, but could change that design if we're talking about, you know, town identity for street infrastructure lighting assets.
And we can have the lights attached to the signal poles.
I don't know.
There's, um, maybe a cost to it, but if that's something we choose to do as part of our style, you know, the pole's already there, and always have a luminary attached to it. It's my word for the day's luminaire.
I put a street light over the road.
Over your private driveway? Um, if you, if it's going to be on your private property, you can request it, and that would just be a private area light. If you want it in the public ride- If you want it in the public right of way of DOT, then you're going to have to go through a municipality because DOT is not going to open the encroachment process just to anyone, I believe.
Yeah, even, even you, I mean, we know you'd be trustworthy and take care of it and all that, but that's the DOT's fears, that somebody like me would go put one up and then forget it's up, not pay the bill. And, you know, then there's stuff with this light on their property. So, yeah. But I'd say, if it's a corridor or a stretch or something that we choose to light, you know, we might consider that.
Alright, any potential future agenda items you want to bring forth?
Can I say something also about the light? We do have a streetlight ordinance that we're able to get through. Dark sky, I think it's a darker sky. Because it does require full cutoff on any new lights. You know, as us as residents, we turn our lights off, these are great, but I'm not sure the town would be interested in telling people what time to turn off their outside lights just yet. You know, we hopefully operate as good neighbors. Somebody's got a light shining on your property and you say, hey, your light's shining, maybe they will, you know, shut it away or something.
Yeah, my, my theory, good neighbors, would be good neighbors. Okay, so.
Just have a couple of quick items for potential future agenda items for you all to consider. First, the, as a reminder for council, this is, we only have one more council meeting of this calendar year. It's set for December eleventh, because the, the, the fourth Thursday is Thanksgiving in November, and then obviously the fourth Thursday in December gets into the holidays. So, so if there's any item that you all would like for us to consider bringing forward, we have one more opportunity for this calendar year. The other item I just want to bring forward for thought is that the next meeting, we're, we're planning on bringing forward the council meeting times and dates for adoption for the next calendar year as well. And there has been some discuss, discussion over the last year about, you know, the times of council meetings, the dates of council meetings, et cetera. And so, I would just, you know, be thinking through that if there's any types of recommended changes, et cetera, that we can also be working on to better prepare for that. We'll gladly take that into consideration after December eleventh.
If I'm not at church on Wednesday nights, someone else has to do the beach fun there. So, that's. Now, we are a community where, you know, we hold our, out in, some of us go on Wednesday nights.
I know we're going to do it in sections, but I'm with him also. I mean, we know these sections are coming. Even if we have to have a special call meeting, just to go over it and get our questions and all answered. We just want to make sure we do this as close to perfect as we can on this timeline we got. It gives us, it forces us to have to. And those meetings there may have to be, we may have to slide in here a little earlier too, you know, and have it on a, a different night than the Thursday night council meeting. I mean, just, you know.
We'll take that into, what we'll do with this information, we'll take it back while I meet with Mr. Malochek. We'll look at the timelines and to see where we think that they're maybe most appropriate for that, at least for consideration.
If we don't need them, we got them as a placeholder. Okay, anything else?
It's December tenth, is that correct? And, and the time, Mike? Six, six to eight thirty PM on December tenth.
Is that going to be like map setup?
So, there will be, with most of the public forums, the consultant has kicked it off with a presentation. So, the idea is that a little after six, the consultant will do maybe a twenty, thirty-minute kind of introductory presentation, introduce the project, but the idea is we'll have multiple large maps throughout the room, get residents' input about, you know, the new draft zoning map. So, if folks have feedback about, you know, how their property may be proposed to be zoned, how areas of town are proposed to be zoned, that, this is all going to be a time for that feedback to be collected. This is not going to be, you know, us on a stage talking to the residents. It's meant to be interactive. And we really just chose the gymnasiums because it worked well with the rural residential, and we wanted to have the large capacity. Correct, yeah. We will try to record that. I believe with the rural residential hearing, we were able to stream or record it through the school system. So, it'll be available after the fact, but yes, if, if folks want to be there for that introductory part, it'd be beneficial.
This is a great way for them groups to spread the word. Alright, anything? Thank you. Second?
Got it.
Sandra, alright, all in favor? We out of here?